Alright guys, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone, now do a quick review of tonight's agenda. I'll be calling for any proposed changes to the agenda. I'll then be going to public comment. There is no submitted public comment either for online public comment or for our meeting here. There will be an opportunity to testify on an SDC hearing later in the agenda. And we'll then go to response to previous public comments, which I do believe we do have a response from our last meeting. Then we'll go to our consent agenda, which has our city council meeting minutes from August fifteenth. So there's no surprises. Did anybody miss the last meeting? All there? Alright, so no one's gonna be abstaining. Alright, good. Really? Huh? Trying to make sure we're good. Trying to make sure we're good. Alright, so under resolutions, we'll have a public hearing on our parks SDC and fee and lieu update. Under new business transit five three three nine federal grant agreement memorandum of understanding with ODA. A report from our city manager, and then we will be closing out our meeting with our council and committee reports. With that, Jeff, will you call the roll things?
Counselor Pitzel.
Here.
Counselor Smallwood.
Here.
Counselor Sheldon.
Here.
Counselor Walker.
Here.
Counselor Exner.
Here.
Counselor Hokinson.
Here.
Mayor Pulliam.
Here. Is there any proposed changes to tonight's agenda? Alright, seeing that, we'll, and if there is no submitted public comment, we'll move ahead to our response to the previous meeting's public comments.
Thanks, Matt. There was a handful of comments at the last meeting. First one that wanted to address was some of the homeless issues around the library. And one of the things that we've been trying to work on there, recognizing that the outlets can be sort of a area that there's sort of a gathering that can happen as they charge their devices. Also, the access to wifi after hours. We had put a box to lock some of the outlets on the building after hours, and this has been damaged or broken. So the other options that we're looking at is actually trying to shut off the power during off hours, which requires a little more work. Electrical service and in a switch and things like that, which we can look at, or just removing the outlets, which I think the library would prefer to have the outlets if we could, but you know, those are kind of just issues that have come up before, and we've kind of worked around, including in city hall and in some of our other parks too, that we're getting a little bit better about dealing with, but we'll continue to strive to find a way to maybe lock off or turn off the power during after hours and wifi too. Like we've done at city hall. The other thing that kind of in general to note about these issues too is we really encourage our community members to call our police, call police non emergency if it's during the day, and we have an officer who is a homeless liaison, and that's our preferred approach is to, you know, during that time when it's occurring, is to send our homeless liaison officer out there to try to help the homeless individuals access resources and referrals. And it's easier for us to help the community member if, you know, we can actually respond and dispatch somebody out there while it's happening and make contact with the individuals. But like I said, we'll work on these other mitigation things in terms of the power outlet and wifi.
George, would you mind including that in your council report at the next meeting to keep up progress specifically for the library?
Okay.
Yeah, I just, and I love the idea that we thought we had it fixed, and but it's something that's happened, but I mean, this has been something I have heard as an ongoing situation for a couple of years now. I just want to make sure that we're actually getting some progress. I have a question about that. Is it, is it possible to trespass them when they catch them doing that? And if not, is that something that we can pass amendments against to allow for them to be trespassed for doing that?
I mean, there's a, you're probably more familiar than I am. There are other reasons to trespass too about litter and that sort of thing that we've done in our parks. In terms of using the public's power after hours is we could think about that perhaps, yeah, unauthorized use of public resource or something. Yeah. There was also a lot of public comment about Cedar Creek Heights. I shared the violation letter with council that was around, you know, the tree mitigation measures and tree protection that they weren't doing and kind of the work that they had started back in the spring and the violations that they incurred because that, I think, part of the message that we heard was just overall concerns about the amount of tree removal, which in the fines were not associated with tree removal is about tree protection of the trees that were not supposed, you know, that they're supposed to protect. But then as part of the conversation, which we'll be bringing back to council in a future meeting, is looking at the violations, actual penalties and upping those penalties, I guess, to make them hurt a little bit more when there is a violation of our tree code or not taking measures, because I think it was what, five hundred to a thousand dollars? We didn't think that was punitive enough to prevent that that activity. And then finally, there was some public comment about garbage at, is it the development down in Crochet Alley?
Well, it was the lack of garbage cans out in front of By Mart, which is a private business.
It is a private business, you know, business recycling requirements for our own purposes, as city ordinance is on recycling and the opportunity to recycle for their employees and interior operations in terms of garbage on the private site is another another matter. We can definitely do some outreach and ask them kindly if we notice that litter is becoming a problem there. Then the other part of that was tree trimming in front of the action center, which I don't think there's actually street trees in front of the action center. It probably is the, must be the trees east of there that may be hanging down low, but we're about seventy percent through doing tree trimming in the downtown, the contract with Ann Farm that we do periodically to get those out of the right of way. And I think they're on their way up pioneer, so we may see some improvement there the coming week.
And on the by corner.
Yeah.
Obviously, it's private property, but I mean, we also don't allow littering and stuff all over, you know? It's not something I've seen over there, but I mean, I think one of the complaints in the testimony was the lack of garbage cans were leading to the increase.
Trash. Which does become a code enforcement issue too, that we can follow on. Yeah, thank you. I think that that was it.
Alright. Moving forward to the consent agenda, I'll have our city council meeting minutes from our August fifteenth meeting. Unless there's discussion, is there a motion to adopt?
I'm making a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
For a second.
Sorry.
Motion by Counselor Smallwood, a second by Counselor Exner to adopt our consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nays. Motion carries. Moving ahead to resolution, so now open our public hearing. Seven oh nine here on September sixth. And call for the staff report for show.
Okay, well, good evening, Council Mayor. Thank you for this opportunity this evening. There are three main objectives to tonight's meeting, and the first one is to adopt via a resolution, the updated SDC and fee and lieu methodology. The second portion is to decide whether to adopt a resolution to raise the fee and the parkland dedication. And third is to evaluate and decide whether to raise parks SDCs. So a staff along with FCS, who is with us here tonight, has been working on updating our methodology for a little over a year. And the city imposes a park system development charge based on and authorized by the standing municipal code. And the code states the methodology used to establish the improvement of fee or reimbursement fee or bowl shall be contained in a resolution adopted by the council. Therefore, the next step in the process is to codify the updated methodology via resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one, which is the first objective of tonight's meeting. So along with adopting the updated methodology, there are two other main objectives, and the second one is to adopt or discuss whether to adopt twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two to raise fee and lieu parkland dedication, and lastly, based on council's feedback, staff has provided four additional parks SDC implementation options for consideration and to decide whether to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two three. And pick one of the four parks SDC implementation options as presented. So having queued that up for FCS, tonight we have with us Zach, Zachariah Hazel and John Girlanducci to present on the background of the work they've completed, the SDC methodology and the four implementation options to raise the SDC as supported by the updated methodology. So I'd like to introduce John and Zach, who are returning. From, we've all met them before, but I'll hand it off to them to do their presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Rochelle, and thank you, Mayor and Council. So we have set this up to do a little bit of background initially. Zach, you could go to that. Thank you. And then I will walk us through that system development charge background, and then Zach will take us through the calculations and numbers at sort of a higher level, and then we'll talk about the different phasing options. So as you know, system development charges are the one-time fees paid at the time of development by new development, or in some cases redevelopment, if they are increasing their, their demands for your different systems. As per ORS, SDCs are available for five systems, water, wastewater, stormwater, transportation, and tonight's focus, parks. We calculate them based on the cost of capital that can include land acquisition and construction costs. And you can only spend them on capital. So system development charge revenues are available for the park system capital projects. There is often, as there is in this case, two components to a system development charge. One is a buy into any unused capacity in the system that's available for growth. That's called the reimbursement fee. And then the second component is a future-based fee, and it is established by looking at the project list and determining how much of each project is providing capacity for future users for growth, and then that makes up the basis of the improvement fee. And the two together make up the system development charge. One last thing, SDCs are for a share of system facilities, not, not local facilities in the case of a water system. It would not be for the meter. It would be for a share of the reservoir, for example, and similarly for parks. So we follow the law very carefully, and there's, there's quite a bit of case law out there too that has arisen over the years. It's ORS two two three dot two nine seven, and it actually now goes through three sixteen, which was recently added, requiring additional transparency and posting of your SDC charges and methodologies online. The calculation framework is summarized here, that reimbursement fee, which is the buy-in to any unused capacity in the existing system. We're trying to isolate the cost or value of that unused capacity that's available for growth. And we divide that cost by the growth that it will serve, the forecasted growth that it will serve. And for the improvement fee, picture, picture a long list of capital projects. We try to isolate the capacity increasing portion of each project, and the total of those is our improvement fee cost basis, again, divided by the growth that those projects will serve. That gives us our improvement fee, so the SDC is that share of parks capacity needed to serve new growth. Some of it's already been built, and some of it is yet to be built through the project list.
Alright, so I'm going to discuss the SDC methodology. I'll try and go quickly, because I believe this is the third time we've talked about this, but starting at the top level here, the current parks SDC is three thousand seven hundred seventeen dollars per single-family dwelling unit. And the current fee and lieu is four thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars per single-family dwelling unit. You can see in the top row of this table here that we typically work out SDCs and fees and lose in terms of residents, number of residents first. And for that calculation, the SDC is eleven thousand four hundred seventy-eight dollars per resident. The fee and lieu is five thousand nine hundred eleven dollars per resident for a total of seventeen thousand three hundred eighty-nine dollars per resident. Now, we take that schedule of SDCs and fees lieu per resident, and we apply it to the different dwelling unit types that you might develop in Sandy. And we apply that based on the number of residents we'd expect per census data. So for example, for the single-family dwelling unit, we'd expect two point seven three residents in a dwelling unit in Sandy. And that works out to be thirty-one thousand three hundred thirty-three dollars for the SDC, sixteen thousand one hundred thirty-five dollars for the fee and lieu, and forty-seven thousand four hundred sixty-eight for the combined total SDC and fee and lieu for a single-family dwelling unit. Just a quick note here, this is a, we're going to be walking through the full methodology, but you can adopt the methodology, as Rochelle brought up, separate from any implementation plan. And you can also adopt the methodology without setting the SDC rate. Also, the city may choose to use its current occupancy assumptions rather than what's shown here on the table, which is based on census data. Alright, so we're going to go through the calculations quickly. First up is the denominator in the SDC calculation, which is your change in residence. That's six thousand four hundred and eighty-eight residents. Next up, this is for the project list, for the future cost component of the SDC. We sort that into two lists. The first list is the infill list. These are park projects that add capacity to your existing park system, but don't necessarily add acres or trail miles and expand that portion of the park system. The total for that list is just shy of one point two million. Next up is the expansion list, and we sort the expansion list into two more lists. The first list here is for parks and natural areas, things that can be measured in terms of acres. For that, the total SDC eligible cost that you see in the bottom right there is just over forty-nine million. There's also the trails component of the expansion lists, and this is quite a long list, so just paging through here. The full SDC eligible cost of your trails projects is four point one million. So here is a combined total for the improvement fee cost basis for your parks and natural areas, plus your trails, plus the infill list. That works out to be just shy of fifty-four point five million for the improvement fee cost basis. For the existing cost component, that is the reimbursement fee. Basically, looking at what you have available in your park system and the development costs of those parks and trails. We get a reimbursable cost amount of twenty-one point two million. We have to make one small adjustment here to the improvement fee cost basis. We remove any outstanding improvement fee fund balance, which works out to be one point two million. And finally, we get to the full SDC calculation here at the end, which, as mentioned before, is thirty-one thousand three hundred thirty-three dollars per single-family dwelling unit. That is, once again, the maximum SDC that you could reasonably charge. It's not what you have to charge. You can charge anything below that. And you can adopt the methodology establishing this without adopting that charge. For the fee and lieu calculation here, we take the current cost per acre for platted land in Sandy. That works out to be eight hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars. And we multiply that by the targeted acres per resident there. And that works out to be a fee and lieu per resident of just shy of six thousand dollars, which applied using census data looks to be sixteen thousand one hundred thirty-five dollars for a single-family dwelling unit. If the city decides to continue with its occupancies that are in its code, you can also see the schedule for that below. And I'll hand it back over to John to talk about some implementation strategies.
Okay, thank you, Zach. And first, we do have some comparables for you. I'll caution you that everybody's plans are different. The levels of service in these different cities are very different. But here's a handful of cities in the region and their current charges. Many of these cities will be encountering increases in their charges. Some are looking at updates right now. Sherwood just adopted a charge of almost fifteen thousand dollars for a single-family residence, but it won't be effective until January first of twenty twenty-three. That's why we didn't include their new charge there. But again, just, just so you, you know, and this will become important in the phasing scenarios, but the average SDC of those agencies which we're showing here above excluding Sandy is seven thousand two twenty-one. If we were to include Sherwood's newly adopted park SDC, that would go up to about eight thousand. Here are the city's current SDCs for all services. There isn't a stormwater system development charge at this time, so right now, a, a single-family residence, a new single-family residence in Sandy would pay this combined charge of a little over seventeen thousand dollars. So we, we looked at some phasing options. The last time we talked to the council and got some, some good direction about phasing alternatives that were of interest, so we've developed those. In one of them, we will start at the current average of those cities from the other page with projected inflation. That's where the seven thousand four fifty-three came from and phase up to twenty thousand over five years, so a pretty relatively compared to these other options, steep phasing schedule, starting at a little bit lower and ending at a little bit lower charge. In no case do we phase up to the full thirty-one thousand dollar fee. That second one, start at eight thousand, which is the projected average with Sherwood's increase, phase into twenty-three thousand over eleven years. A third option, start at eight thousand, phase into twenty-five thousand over eleven years. And then, as Zach described, we've calculated both reimbursement fee and an improvement fee. That reimbursement fee is a little over eight thousand dollars, so one, that fourth option would be to start at the full reimbursement fee and basically phase in the improvement fee such that the total would reach twenty-five thousand over eleven years. The advantage of, of implementing a full reimbursement fee is you have more flexibility as a city and how you spend reimbursement fee proceeds. They can be spent on both growth-related and non-growth-related parks capital projects, so it gives you a little more flexibility. That was the, the rationale for picking that number as a starting point. And then, in all cases, the, the general direction was to adopt the full fee and lieu immediately. That's based on actual land acquisition costs in the city of Sandy and represents you know, real costs that would be foregone if the city did not fully implement that fee. So here's what the actual scenarios look like. These don't include projected inflation beyond that first year. So if we were to assume implementation on January first, that scenario one starts at the current average of that group and phases to twenty thousand in five years, and then, you know, up to the city where it went from there, we've left it at the twenty thousand. That would presumably be increased by inflation every year. Scenario two, jumps to the eight thousand in year one on January first, and then phases up to twenty-three thousand in eleven years. Scenario three, very similar, but it phases up to twenty-five thousand. And then scenario four, that full reimbursement fee is eight thousand eight ninety-seven, so that would be the first step effective January first, and then phase up to twenty-five thousand over that eleven-year period. Of course, there are an infinite number of additional phasing scenarios. We're trying to give you some, some options to choose from. It was, it was another question, there was another question about how much revenue is essentially foregone by choosing one of these phasing scenarios, because if you're not at the full, if you're not at the full implementation immediately, there is some revenue left on the table, so to speak. So at that first option, the five-year phase into twenty thousand, a little over twenty-eight million in delayed projects, you see the, the sort of pinkish hue section of the stack bar, that would be revenue lost in that scenario. The eleven-year phase into twenty-three thousand, a longer phasing period. So that would be almost thirty million in foregone revenue and delayed projects. And then to twenty-five thousand, a little over twenty-seven million in foregone revenue, and then the one where we started the reimbursement fee and phased into twenty-five thousand, that's the least amount of foregone revenue, twenty-six point six million in delayed projects. So that's the, that's our prepared material.
Thank you, John. Rochelle, do you have more to present, or should we go to questions?
Yeah, this time I don't. Just thank you, FCS, for the information and.
Thank you. Does council prefer to ask any questions they may have now, or would you like to wait until after public testimony? A testimony first. Alright, I'm now calling on public testimony. Please try to avoid repetition. If someone else has already expressed the same thoughts, it is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. For those joining us in person this evening, please raise your hand to indicate you would like to speak and wait to be recognized. If you are participating online, click the raised hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. And we'll call on each person when it's their turn to speak. Each participant will receive up to three minutes to testify, and our city recorder Jeff will let you know when you have twenty seconds remaining. Our council rules do require that each person state your name and address for the record. I'll now be calling on any testimony for the proposal. No, sir?
Yeah.
Three minutes, just a reminder, please state your name and address for the.
Sure, my name is Don Robertson. I live at three eight four one two Juniper Street, nine seven zero zero five. Thank you, right? Obviously, I'm here to support it. I'm the current chair of the Parks and Trails Advisory Board. This is not an easy task to, to do, setting systems development charges. So I'll kind of talk about that second, but first I want to talk a little bit about fee and the importance of that. Fee and lieu is how we rely, is primarily what we rely on to be able to acquire property. Without fee and lieu that is set at a rate that is equal to, generally speaking, what land is going for, we don't have a hope in heck to be able to make additional land purchases. Without additional land purchases, well, we won't be able to do neighborhood parks, we won't be able to do sensory gardens, we won't be able to do regional parks or sports fields or anything else. So that's why, from my perspective, and I believe from the Parks and Trails Advisory Committee, the number one priority for us is to make sure that we get the fee and lieu fee adjusted to the appropriate amount. Secondly, I want to talk about the systems development charges. As our speaker prior to me pointed out, they come in two flavors. The first is the development charges, those are for adding capacity to the communities or community growths. That's a very important part of it, but the second one is the reimbursement. That's kind of like the buy-in for new community members into the existing system that is out there. We have more flexibility in dealing with that one. I can assure you that without significant increases in our systems development charges and enacting the reimbursement fees, that they will come when they're going to need to replace the forest, fantasy forest playground over here. And that's not far away. Someone would tell you that it's got a few years left on it. I'd probably tell you that it's pretty much done right now, and it made some significant replacement. Short of being able to divert general fund dollars over there, not quite sure how you're going to replace that. If we lose the water feature at Hornstein Park, I'm afraid that'll go dry. And so the hundreds of kids that are out there, and I live near that park, I could tell you, it's a lot. Kids are out there every day. They're not going to have a whole lot of fun playing on a dry fountain out there. And the same goes for, again, developing, excuse me, developing those parklands that we're able to acquire. One can always say, wow, there's always grant opportunities to do these things. I have the good fortune of sitting on the local government grant program, which is the single largest granting source in the state of Oregon.
Twenty seconds to.
Last year, we had about fifteen million dollars to give out. We had about double that, about thirty million dollars in requests. It's extremely competitive. The average grant that we gave out was about four hundred thousand dollars, maybe a little bit under that. So you're not going to be building a lot of parks if you're fortunate enough to get one of those grants. So in conclusion, I support increasing the systems development charges, of course, I love option B. I'd be happy with option A, frankly. And I really support the increase in the fee and, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, man.
Alright.
We do have a hand raised online, man.
Alright, perfect. Just call him up.
Preston, you should be able to unmute yourself now. And just a reminder to please state your name and address for the record.
Welcome, Preston. Hello. Thanks for having me, everyone. My name is Preston Kors. I'm based at one five 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 Bangy Road in Lake Oswego, Oregon, nine seven zero three five. I am the Director of Government Affairs at the Home Builders Association here in the region. And I am called, I'm writing, well, you'll, you'll have received my written testimony already. But I did want to just pop in today. I apologize that I couldn't be there in person to reflect not only my support for some key proponents within the recommendation in front of you today, but also to express some of our serious concerns with the way that methodology is being placed, or at least where the money is being dropped within the range for the SEC increases. So we, just for the record, we do, you know, support updating the methodology for the fee and lieu to reflect present day costs of land. We think that makes a lot of sense. And we also agree that there's a need, a need for more flexibility. And that's why we also support, you know, capturing those reimbursement fees. So with that said, we do worry that the current rate of increase doesn't necessarily match both population or inflationary data. And that's where we want to urge caution in adopting these fees. Basic, basic argument behind this flussy is that we should be looking at everything that a city governments do within the lens of housing affordability. Because we are currently in a housing crisis region wide, and we want to make sure that, you know, these jump, sharp jumps in increases over such a short amount of time, don't disproportionately impact affordability in the city of Sandy. So with that, I, you know, don't want to take up too much time. I would just urge everyone to read the testimony that we submitted and happy to work with anyone. And I appreciate the city, city staff for working with me and communicating with us up to this point. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Preston. Appreciate it. Further testimony.
Mayor, just look for any other raised hands. And I do not see any other raised hands.
Thank you. I will now call on the staff recap for our nation.
And so the staff recap and recommendation is to adopt the resolution to codify the Parks and Trail or the, excuse me, the system development charges and fee and lieu updated methodology is the staff's recommendation.
Thank you. And I'll now open up for discussion. The next move in our hearing is to call for a motion to close the public hearing, but it's something you or all of you may recognize that also limits our opportunities to ask any questions or have back and forth with anyone who's provided testimony. So we can either go into discussion now or we can close the public hearing. They keep it open.
Yes, you know, I have some questions.
Okay, great. Let's go. Questions or comments?
Some, yes. So I asked a couple of these, Michelle, earlier. So can we raise them in the future at all, like, you know, ten years down the line? Yes. Yes. Okay. And then this is the, for the consultants. Thank you for being here. I'm FCS there. There was two different numbers being used for the assumptions on, you know, three units, three people per unit on a single family versus, I think you guys did two point something, two point six or something. And you said that we could use either one. And does that decision about which number you're using get made when we adopt the methodology? Or, or when we adopt the SDCs? Or at what point does that get locked in?
So the, that's a, that's a great question. We've provided both in the report, both options for the fee and lieu. That's where it, it came up. The, the three, two and two numbers, the rounded numbers are in the city code right now. We used, and we think the city should use, the updated current numbers from the most recent census. Those are actual occupancy averages for the city, but the city does have the option of using its sort of prescribed occupancy. I guess you'd call those rounded averages. I think you would just need to clarify in in the resolution, and I should defer to the city attorney on, on when that choice would need to be made, but both options are in the methodology for the fee and lieu.
Last question. Oh.
I'm sorry. Josh, did he need to jump in or did he have?
I was just going to answer that question if you wanted. Yes, with both being, both of those being in the methodology, adopting the methodology does not pick one or the other. It'll be when you actually adopt the fee in a separate resolution that you'd be choosing.
Thank you. Last question, well, two questions. So when you showed kind of the projects that wouldn't get done in on slides twenty-five to thirty-eight in your presentation, the projects, does that mean that that money foregone then becomes available after two thousand and thirty-five or, you know, so it's just a time thing or it just never gets collected?
You know, in all likelihood, it never gets collected. One of the, one of the problems, I guess you could say with the SDC Act is you can't go backwards and collect for a growth share of projects once that growth has occurred. You know, so we couldn't charge future growth for a share of projects that have already been let, let, let me say, and, and charge and charge them for that lost revenue and make, you can't make up the revenue in future.
We, that standpoint, you couldn't call that a reimbursement fee at that standpoint from that, at that time point? No?
No, because, because you would have you would have built. Okay, so let me, let me get, let me make sure I get this right. You would have built some portion of that list. You would have collected a portion of it, but, and so those, that development would have not paid its full share of the capacity there to serve it because you'd essentially be undercharging that development. In order to make up for that in the future, you'd have to overcharge future development, and that is what is prohibited by statute.
Thank you.
We can't charge future growth more than its equitable share.
The last question I have is kind of site specific, but it's a, a close to my heart. The trails in Mining Park are horrendously in need of replacement. And we had had a, actually a contract that we let to replace all those trails with eight pack gravel ADA compliant trails, which would have, I thought in my mind, would have opened them up to a, yeah, a different audience capacity, you know, some capacity. In Tupper, you have a reimbursement fee share of thirty-four percent, but in mining, you have a reimbursement fee of zero. And so you don't have to answer it now, but I would be looking at, you know, if you guys could kind of study that a little bit and see if there's any opportunities there to get creative on how we help, you know, like Dawn mentioned Fantasy Forest and things like that, you know, to say that our hugest community park has no role to play with reimbursement fees is kind of a concern.
And, and beyond that, to your previous question, Fantasy Park was a community fundraiser park. So it didn't ever use SDC money.
Used a lot of general.
Yeah, sure.
But yeah. So yeah, if you could just kind of, I don't need an answer tonight, but I'm going to kind of follow back up with Jordan and Rochelle to see what the options are there.
We will do that.
Thank you. Great job.
Yeah, I have a, a big picture question. First, I want to couch my conversation from here on out in that I think our parks are what draw people together. I think our parks and trails are the reasons why people love to be in the city of Sandy. We have such beautiful places and, and we need to increase that as we grow and as we make things available for people. And I just, I know there are several parks that I would love to see improved and, and cleaned up and in some cases agreed to enlarge in some different capacities. But I have a bigger picture thing and maybe, I think it's Jeff, can you go to slide twenty-two, the presentation? I have a, the picture I, I'm looking at here is, is that you look at the entire STCs that we collect for every development. And if you look at the amount of the STCs that we collect, we collect somewhere in the order of about seventeen thousand dollars worth of there just, yeah, of STCs for everything, water, wastewater, parks. We don't include storm in there, which we could, streets and parks. So in, in my mind, the way that we are increasing the parks want to leave the intention or the thought that I think that we shouldn't be collecting more money for our parks, but it looks to me like we would be increasing parks by an exponential amount. Any one of our alternatives that was presented and well done, by the way, would increase the, all of the collected monies for an SDC at the very beginning by substantially amount of money compared to the other items that are on that list. And I want to wonder if something like wastewater wouldn't be as crucial, if not even more crucial, to be able to have for us in terms of how we look at whatever we're doing now in terms of capacity, keeping track of all the things that we need to do. I look at what some of these increases might do and admittedly minor personal calculations, but at one point, it looks like we might be doubling the STCs for like parks compared to the rest. And I know that in the future, we're going to be talking about increasing SDCs for other items, streets. Because of the same kind of reasons that we're talking about needing to increase those in, in parks as we grow and as we need to have those improvements. And I'm thinking about what it would take if we were to put another thirteen, fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars to the number that we have here without looking at what the picture of the entire STCs are that we collect. I think we need a little bit of conversation about what we're thinking about for the rest of it and how that impacts our houses. I talked a little bit earlier today about having about a seventy thousand dollar appreciation in housing from twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. Admittedly, that's all about, at least in my mind, competition, need for more inventory, inflation and all the rest, but throw another it's called twenty-five thousand in in eleven years, that's a fair amount of money to increase to that single family home. So to me, I think we need to think a little bit about what the perspective is in terms of all of our SDCs and how that affects how we sell houses in this area. And I tried really hard not to be bringing up the real estate world, even though that's my background, but I think there is a thing to think about and how we look at our sales. And, and if you look at, I know some of the council haven't really been involved in this much, but those other SDCs, council in the past has talked about prioritizing what things are really crucial, what things are not absolutely crucial, what things we can even leave on the list in case we get a windfall some way. But there are some things that are really crucially important that we should put those on the financing list. Don't know that that's quite happened here. So in my mind, I'm concerned about the amount of the total amount of collecting for parks SDCs.
Well, I mean, to, just to play off of that, to that point and thinking about that slide for a second, right? Like we, we look at that slide and we think about where our parks SDCs are today, next, where all our other SDCs are. We're fresh in our minds thinking about what we want to raise just the parks SDC over the next five years or eleven years. But we don't have as fresh in our minds what we're looking to do on a rate analysis to wastewater and water and streets, you know, over the next five, 10 years. We just went through that process not long ago. Obviously not tonight. You know, to what you're talking about, Carl, I mean, you're, you're exactly right. You know, I was talking to Jordan the other day. You know, I got two little kids that we talk about all the time and we're coming up the SDC and I was like, you know, I get a lot more aggressive with parks improvements that every year Lucy gets a little bit older, you know, because I'm running out of time, you know, running out of time as, as parents. And I know we want that for our kids. But at the same time is we've got to have a strong community where our toilets flush, where clean, fresh, drinkable water, you know, comes out of our faucets and where those same kids I'm talking about move back to Sandy and have an affordable home, you know, and, and way of life, you know, they can afford to come back to. And I think you got to balance all those things. I know I am tonight. I, I, I think we've got to adjust the parks SDC. I, I think that, you know, it is out of date. I think it does need to grow. I do not believe though that it needs to grow to what's being proposed in five years, especially knowing what's going on with water and wastewater. I think, you know, there are suggestions tonight and testimony and others that I think are a lot more, you know, let's, let's get it right, right off the bat and then look at cost of living adjustments, maybe some incremental changes as years go. But I think we need to be thinking really heavily, you guys, about what's coming down the pipe in wastewater and water, what Carl just talked about and where our priorities are. And to your point earlier, that it's been weighing on me, we don't have to fix the metro housing crisis. We're not the cause of it. We certainly don't have to fix it, but we do got to be thinking about it, you know, because we do play a part in it. That's the housing inventory. Our kids and our grandkids are going to be thinking about maybe us in a couple of years as we're moving around. So it's important. And yeah, go ahead.
The thing that's really, also want to put into this mix is that, and I've said this before, some of my appraisers who have talked to me about how SDCs influence how their appraisal works for them is that Sandy is kind of has a history of being under financed in the SDCs. We, we need to take advantage of that. And there are, you know, if you talk about the seventy thousand dollar differences in prices average from last year to this year. I wonder just how influential that, that SDC would be. We're talking seventy thousand dollars just in competition to get a house up there. Now there's other things, inflation, materials. There's a lot of other things in there, but it is to my mind modified some way, but I do know that we are known for being kind of cheap guy on the list. And I think that list that the staff showed was obvious. So we're down there in second lowest. We need to think about increasing it. I just wonder how much and what that means to me. And and I think we need to increase the parks recreation SDCs. Certainly the infill stuff, I'm really supportive of that.
All right. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for the work that they put into this because it's a lot of work is going into it. You know, Dawn, you guys with the Parks and Trail Board, you guys have spent a lot of time working on this and it's very appreciated. I also agree that these SDCs need to be raised. I just can't support this level of increase. And so looking at the median, so the median income for the city right now for the twenty twenty census is eighty-one thousand dollars. Versus Sherwood, who's one of our comparables that's been used, is a hundred and ten thousand versus Lake Oswego, who's at a hundred and forty thousand. So, you know, we're not, we're not comparing apples to apples when we're talking about who is moving into Sandy and who our future residents are. And part of the goal of council is to make decisions, not only for your current residents, but also for your future residents. We're short sighted if we're only looking at what we have today. I do agree that they need to be raised and they need to be increased. And God knows I want parks, wonderful parks and trails as much as everybody else. I again, I'm going to throw out advocating for a parks district. You know, that has got to be a direction that we go at some capacity, whether it's looking at aquatics or it's looking at parks, parks and wrecks and how we decide to go about that. But I think that needs to be a goal of ours moving forward is, is to work on that in some capacity and who and what that includes. Whether we try and grab some of our local residents outside of the city limits. And I think we need to do a real deep dive into obtaining money via that avenue. But we can't continue to saddle everything on the backs of the taxpayers and the residents of the city of Sandy. So I do support increasing parks SDCs, absolutely, but just not to this increase.
Yeah, I'll just sound like a broken record, but you know, agree with the comments being made. You know, I've been on the Parks Board represented, the Parks Board from council. The comments being made. You know, I've been on the parks board represented, the parks board from council ladies on. Supportive of it, some of that list, some of the list I helped create. On that, you know, it's a dream list for sure, just like some of the other things that we do with streets and and other things. But, you know, the the rate of increase is just is has to happen. We we need to have have it happen. Because, you know, just inflation itself and just have not raised it. And that's where we went back from years back past of going. From the buildings like, okay, it came to us, it was like this ginormous amount, we have to raise it, right? Council said, no, no way. Heck no, let's raise it small incremental every year versus trying to do it just this massive to get up, get caught up on this thing. That was, I don't know, ten, twelve years ago, when Tracy brought it in front of the council at the time. It's kind of that frog, you know, you 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 raise it slowly, multiple increments versus in the pot of boiling water before it boils to. Then throwing a boiling pot of water and jumping out. And I feel this is kind of that, you know. Whether it's the comparables that are being used, you know, having it go and showing above the cost of Lake Oswego is just is is mind boggling. And I understand that they're raising their rates and that's the maximum capacity and in in so many years, I understand all that. But the perception of it, right, is just too much. I go back, you know, and I've said this many times, like the mayor, you know, I have kids that I hope can buy a house in Sandy one day, right? I also have kids that I hope will have kids and have grandkids that could go to the parks, right? Like, I am all supportive of it. You know, especially those linear parks, you know, because I like to run, so there's my running comment. So. So don't get me by saying, you know, I I wanna be able to fund those there. I just, I worry about, and you know, Carl brings up a good point with all the other ones. I think it's been proven here just in the last few months that we need to have an SDC for our stormwater. Just, you know, other cities do. So. So what that looks like, I think we should have the fee in lieu of, I think that's, I'm confused with all the different resolutions. I scratched my head going, which one is which? There's three of these things and so I haven't, but you know, I totally agreement of that. I think we should be purchasing land. I think we should be purchasing land outside the city that will be annexed in like we did with Bornstead years ago. I think that was a wise move and it's proven that. But we need to have the cash to be able to do that. I think that the the first plan that was there is is too aggressive and too strong. I know we brought back eleven years. For some reason in my mind, I thought we'd have something that was more like a twenty years, a slower raise to that over time, because inflation will happen. So, you know, if I was to look at something on that, you know, I'd be definitely citing for the the. The one on the right, the the slower amount to get there. But I I feel. It feels a pretty big thing to swallow. You know, we're trying to eat the whole elephant in one bite. And I get it, we want to eat the elephant, but we need to maybe take some slower approach to it. So, it's my opinion.
Right, yeah. Can I ask John a question? Cause I just, there was just something he put out that I didn't catch. Is that okay? Yeah, John, you said Sherwood changed their amount. What what did their amount go up to?
Just shy of fifteen thousand dollars for a single family residence, but it's effective January first. That's why we left it off the table.
So I'd like to point out, right, there from January first Sherwood's going to fifteen grand. That's only five thousand dollars less than what we're talking about a year, a five years down the road, which inflation will put us there anyways. Or further down the road even, right? So so we're talking these numbers. I don't like these numbers because a couple of things. I know two of them also have parts and wrecks levies that they pay for, which are substantial things, right? That that goes to this, helps you minimize your SDCs.
Some of those are are optional too, aren't they? They're purchased, they're more of operational kind of things.
Yeah, they they pay for their parks, yeah. So they're in in multiple ways. Some some of these cities I know are land banking. As opposed to as opposed to fee and loan and stuff like that. But my point to that is, is like, these numbers are are supplemented in other ways, for at least some of them, not some of them, I don't know. And and then, you know, some of them I feel like. Don't quite compare to the parts system that we have out here, which comes at a cost. You know, there's five pages of projects listed in this report. Fifty four million, I think, is what it was. Someone's gotta pay for that. And, you know, there's there's going to be a lot of different things that are gonna cut wastewater. Personnel costs, hers, everything's gonna go up, right? So in my mind, I'm thinking, well, how do we do that? Well, there's two ways. We either. Charge the, we either get a, I I love the idea of a parks and wrecks district, right? But I don't think that's an option for now. And the thing is, if we raise these, we can always lower these two. So I mean, it's not that we have to be set to this if a parks and wrecks district goes and. We decide to to shift money around and do things, at at that time, a council can adjust it again, right? So I think we have to look at where are we now and and where do we wanna go? If five pages of projects are where we wanna go, we gotta figure out how to pay for them. So there's kind of two options. We need to pay for them with SDCs. And that, or I don't think we're gonna get a levy through, and I I'm sure it's I'm not gonna sponsor for one when we're raising water and wastewater and all of that. So the question is, do we do we supplement with general fund? And essentially that's gonna put the the burden on our current residents, right? I don't like that idea. I think we're in this process. Somewhat our current residents have expected that and future residents need to help pay for the growth of the future change. And that's where these SDCs come in. I just think that that is the way. Now, if we wanna shorten that 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 project down, that project list down and and that, then there's probably incurs to movement. But where we sit right now, I I don't know how you pay for all of that without raising SDCs. The the second thing is, I keep hearing that the housing prices that not adjusting the SDCs is going to somehow make a portable house. Twenty fifteen thousand dollars, twelve thousand, I had, so I had them over here. It's a little over twelve thousand dollars. Isn't gonna take a Sandy house to make it a portable house. And these houses are gonna sell for a market value regardless where SDC sits. So I think by looking like a lot of this discussion, we're short sight a little bit. We have to figure out where we're gonna pay. I love the idea of we also need to look at everything else and figure out where we're at. And and maybe we don't make a decision on that tonight, or we find something a little more conservative. But I don't see how we do five pages of parks improvement without getting up around that twenty thousand. I just don't. Fifty four million dollars is a lot of. Absolutely, but this is our priority. This is what's in our, we just adopted. Then how do how do we, how do we, we need to, we need to have that conversation of what we're gonna exclude out? Or we have to put it on the backs of development and they pay for that. Let's go to Don and Kathleen, just don't have some chance to speak there.
Cool, thanks. Rich, I really appreciate that. I feel exactly the same way. I mean, as a council, we give direction to to raise things. We said be aggressive. They've done that. There are a few things I heard that don't seem quite right. One is our eight thousand dollars that we're proposing for next year is not above Lake Oswego. It's half of Lake Oswego currently. So that long term would arrive, would go above, but that's, who knows where Lake goes long term will go as well. So they're different. The median income is interesting to me. Quick Google, Estacada is sitting around seventy one K per household. They have a six thousand dollar SDC that they're already paying, they're already paying more than us for the parks. With similar similar household.
They're not paying twenty.
Pardon?
But they're not paying twenty.
Well, we're not talking twenty. We're, we can only compare what they have posted today with what we are posting for. Our January one twenty twenty three, which would be seven thousand. Right? That's that's what this proposal is, is it seven thousand, right?
Well, then it'll ramp up.
And then it ramps up.
Right.
What? Number one, A is twenty thousand in five years. And that's pretty significant. No, I agree, but but we're not so. So what we're asked, so so that's one point. We have to decide what kind of ramp we want. And if it's any of these, if it's not these, we send staff back and we're not gonna prove it today. But they've given us four flavors of aggressive ramps, which I think is exactly what we asked them to do. The second point is that. Yeah, we've got all these other SDCs and charges, but that's not the issue in front of us today. So I think we have to compartmentalize and pick.
I think.
Well, I'm not. To Rich's point, there's a list of park improvements. And if we don't fund it, then our quality of life for our residents goes down as the parks degrade over time or without enough, or this population goes to nineteen thousand. And we have the same number of parks that we have today. I mean, that that's a decrease of the quality of life. On on the city residents and and that's what we're asked to protect. And this is a means to protect them. So I for one am in favor of this and I like the option D. If we're nervous about that cap, to Rich's point, we can come back and we can, if we see. Demand drop for new applications, we can always adjust. Let the market drive it.
Um, now I can't. Okay, so the SDCs, it's on, okay. So to the folks that bring up the water, the wastewater park streets, I had the same kind of thought about, you know, how parks compares to these other utilities and how important the. Crises were looking at with the water and wastewater. And I asked some questions. Okay, first of all, the water stuff, we. We're just now starting the plan to expand or deal with all the issues there at the water treatment plant. So they're doing a plan. It's what they're gonna come up with some costs and then we're gonna be looking at SDC increases for that. Wastewater, this number that we have for wastewater fifty four eighty, current SDC is from that two thousand nineteen plan that, of course, you guys more know more about it than I do. But I thought it was like, I don't know, what, sixty million, whatever the price tag was on that early plan that I think it was less than that, but. This SDC is based on that lowball number that came out of that plan, but now Jenny's looking at, you know, revising the plan because the numbers are higher. We're trying to get it down, but my point is, is that as soon as she figures out what the plan is and what it costs. This number for wastewater needs to go up, but it's reflecting an old number, an old cost number. So, you know. So so there's that. And so. When you look at those kind of, and I agree with the stormwater, and I don't know much about what the streets is doing, but. My point is, is that, you know, I don't think the parks is gonna be looking like it's way over these other things when they get theirs caught up a little bit more. But my point also is that our current SDCs are seventeen thousand dollars or so. And when we're talking about houses selling for five hundred thousand, four hundred thousand, even three hundred and fifty thousand, which is pretty rare. You know, charging seventeen thousand dollars a one time fee for the rest of the existence of that house, in my opinion. Is is way low, you know, and I think we need to be kind of relooking that. And and the reason I think that is because all all I hear from people is that developers aren't paying their fair share of all this development. And we're in this wastewater situation because we didn't have SDCs as to what they should be, you know, twenty years ago. We're eating the, you know, we're kind of, what do you call that? You know. Harvesting the, you know, seeds of that bad crop where we didn't have the SDCs that where they needed to be, and now the costs have gone way up. And so I really do believe that, you know, the ability for us to kind of. Require the developers and the new development to pay for this expanded capacity is where we need to be doing with these SDCs. Now, I I don't disagree with you about the the parks district, but the reality is that, you know. You can't charge money to get into the dog park or walk the Tickle Creek Trail or anything like that. You know, I I think that park district works for an operations and maintenance for something that you could actually. Limit use and, you know, ball fields and, you know, a community center or an aquatic center or whatever. I think that you can. You know, do a parks district for that, but I don't believe that it's likely to pass a parks district. Where it's just covering, because then they're gonna want parks way up the mountain. They're gonna want everything up there and I don't think that's gonna pass. But my point also was just that, you know, I really wanna see us. Collect this money and and get some of these projects. You said there's five pages project. Some of these projects are like two thousand dollars, fifteen hundred dollars. You know, so yes, it's five pages, but a lot of it are just small potato, little lurs of trails and this and that. So, you know, I kind of. I I, you know, I don't, I'm not too concerned about five pages when they're all kind of small potato things. But I believe that we need to start charging. We need to, you know, I believe the the option D where we do look at the. It's again, only half of what Lake Oswego and Sherwood are charging. And then, you know, working up. And you know, if we want a a longer ramp or something, but I do believe that we need to, you know, get up to the twenty five thousand dollar level so that we can. You know, and even that gives leaves us pretty, you know, twenty six million dollars short of all that list of projects that are gonna be needed in, you know, fifteen and twenty years when our. Populations are so much larger. Because I will tell you just from, you know, lots of experience, knowledge about how we got our parks. We we got our parks on the cheap. We built Tickle Creek Trail for a hundred and eighty nine thousand dollars. That's not possible anymore. So I think we need to be realistic about what things cost and and what people want and we need to. To, you know, I get it. I'm okay with a longer ramp, but I think we need to start. You know, responding to the residents that say we want new development to pay its way rather than putting it on the backs of existing residents.
So there are some contrary things, what you just said, and and I'm gonna add to your fire here a little bit too. I looked at the value of houses and talked about three fifty to five hundred. Well, the new houses are well over six hundred. I mean, you look at what's going on at Bailey, there's not a house out there that's going for less than five seventy five. That's a cheap one. Six hundred and twenty, they're out there. And the average is five ninety. The last two years, so. Looking to myself, that's a lot of money for, you know, let's let's call it another. And maybe I'm confused, but I that form, that gradation of Sandy New to the bottom of Estacada was we're at thirty one thousand, thirty three thousand, not twenty thousand. So I'm unsure about what those numbers are.
Cause we're all talking different numbers.
We're talking.
Well, that was the max, thirty one's, thirty one's the max we can go at.
Twenty's the proposal.
Staff hasn't proposed in twenty five, it's what Kathleen just mentioned.
Well, twenty five is the other, is option D.
There's there's.
Twenty is the least.
It all starts between seven and eight.
Yeah. So really, the the first jump, I'm not really struggling much with the first jump. It's just a three, four thousand dollars. Jump from what we have now and Lord knows we need to do something more with our parks and wreck. And I. I cannot say any less than strongly that we need to do those kind of things. I just wanna say that I think that there is another. Analysis we need to do that does influence how we collect SDCs in parks and trails. In that, we're at seventeen grand right now for everybody. Don't even include the waste, the stormwater. But you know, that's my big thing. I think we need to start throwing dollars into that. Where should we be? I've been told forty thousand to house. I'll be more closely what Sandy will be charging than seventeen. If that doesn't make a difference on a six hundred thousand dollar house, maybe we should really go at it. Maybe it should be fifty thousand, but I think there needs to be a calculation in there. And then how does that affect the parks and recreation? I wanna see that thing built to the point where we're starting to do things. I have some really. Big priorities I would love to see on that five page list happen. I think those are really important to us. But do we need to go at it at this speed? Do we need to make it at this large portion? Or maybe there is a possibility of going up. I don't know, but. I think there needs to be a look at the bigger picture of things rather than just jumping at it piecemeal for parks. So I I would propose that we would look at. Not in detail like we have here. Obviously, this is a master plan result, but. How does that all get affected? And if we jump into a piecemeal by piecemeal? And how does that look like when we start thinking about what our needs are for the other? And we're in crisis about our sewer water. We're about to be crisis for our drinking water.
With no options, by the way. I can't keep hearing like all this nuance for our parks and wreck fee and, you know, these parks or these parks and pay for this or not pay for this. I've never had that much conversation with wastewater and water because our options aren't that nice. Like, we're very boxed in. We gotta go pay for it, right? So I just. One thing is like the set rules that we have to go pay for. The other, we actually have some control over which is this. And that's where, sorry to interrupt it.
I had one more point. Kathleen's argument there, I think that it's really crucial that we. We do that. And and I think it is that list of projects that are on there, that's some two thousand dollar, five, ten thousand dollar projects. Yeah, we should write the check and do it. There's some things in there we just need to do. But we do need to think about how to make that stuff operations. There's a big piece of this that we're not even talking about. This is all about capital. There's nothing there to how, how are we gonna mow those puppies? How are we gonna keep paying for the water? How are we gonna keep paying for, you name it, paint, picks it up, things that are, look, seven thousand new residents. And I'm, but I do think that the new people really need to be paying for it. We're sorry, six hundred thousand of the proposal.
It's not to this level.
So, yeah.
So I'm going to disagree with you, Dawn, in that, I don't, I'm just saying. It in that we need to compartmentalize. I I don't think that you can do that at this level. I think you do have to look at everything, because if you don't, you're short-sighted and you miss something. So to say that I can ignore increases in SDCs for wastewater or water or for streets or for sewer and just look at parks, no, I can't, absolutely cannot do that. Because if water goes up, if we come back and, hey, uh, our wastewater needs to be at twenty grand and our water needs to be at twenty grand and our streets need to be at twenty grand and we need to do a sewer at twenty grand, well, now we're at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in SDCs. You gotta be kidding me. So, yeah, no, do I think that the parks need to be increased? Absolutely. I think it all needs to be increased. You get no argument from me out of that. But not at this level and definitely not at this level without looking at all of the others.
Where do you think you should set, set your asking? What's your number?
For the for the parks? I'd be, you could, you could get me to go to the increase for today's, the seven thousand or whatever it is, I would vote for that. And then I would, and then to stay there for the time being until everything else is looked at. You could get me on that, absolutely. I don't see anything wrong with the original number, with the initial number. I can totally support that. It's the, it's the increase without looking at everything else I can't support right now. I can't do it.
Just some clarifying questions here, part that I'm confused of. We have the SDC part, we have the fee in lieu part. How are those combined? And I mean, I think what I heard from everyone was we're all on board on the fee in lieu of, but I could be wrong, but can you help lay that out? Because we have all these different competing plans on there or ideas, and then there's this adopt a fee in lieu of part as well. And I I missed in understanding when I read it, so.
Yeah, so the, there's two different types of fees. The one that system development charges is for the improvement and reinforcement. Fee and lose, we get right when development comes in and they can either dedicate a piece of property or fee. And so when FCS calculated those two numbers in the final methodology, they showed those numbers combined, but in reality, they're two different types of fees.
So that number that we're seeing are the two combined. Is that right? Or is it? Because the way I was reading those numbers were that was just the SDCs and we're going to have a fee in lieu of in addition to the SDC. But you're saying what we're seeing here on these graphs on page like twenty-four, slide twenty-four, on any one of the years is a combination between the SDC and the fee. So where is the fee in lieu of on top of this SDC?
It's a separate, so the way we laid it out.
Either one or the.
Yeah, it's kind of jumped to number three of the conference, because that's where we kind of thought it would go, was talking about the options. Really, the council could, right now, adopt the resolution for the methodology and the fee and the methodology, so you get that out of the way. And if you all agree on the fee and lieu amount, increasing that amount to the the updated numbers based on market or whatever, you can get that out of the way. And then the third resolution is actually, what do you want the new parks SDC to be? You have the, you get the methodology out of the way, and then you just focus on, do you want to implement a phase in or not and what amount?
Okay, that helps clarify some things, because it's just. Well, I love a good, you know, um, but, yeah, I think we got too much in this. I think we agree on some of this. And there's a piece we don't. Can we maybe close?
We might want to just take them one at a time at this point. Do the methodology.
One thing I wanted to add on, you said you're talking about that eight thousand, you know, there. Then we can do that and then add on the cost of living, you know what I mean? Cost of living adjustment each year after that, and then have, you know, council.
We can do that, or like I said, I'd be, I mean, for me personally, I'd I'd be happy to relook at these numbers. Right. Once we know what exactly is in front of us.
What, one of the things that we have is that, first of all, we've already cut rid of twenty-six million dollars or so worth of the projects on the five-page list. So, um, and the other thing is that, you know, a lot of the projects in the next five years are are the the neighborhoods, you have the Deer Point Park, the Champion Way Park, the Ponder Lane Park, you know, there are parks that we're already kind of committed to building. And so, you know, that's kind of a concern. And then the other thing I would just throw out there is that, you know, it's also possible to go ahead and adopt something, and if we do get, when we, when we do get the other SDCs, you know, if those come in way out of, you know, twenty thousand or whatever you're talking about, Lori, that's an opportunity then to kind of look at the balance and say, well, let's take park the SDCs down and and to balance them. I mean, I think we can balance it either direction.
Yeah, and I would, and then that's kind of what I'm saying. I think you and I are saying the same thing. I don't disagree with that. I don't disagree with, we can start here, right? And then once we have a good picture, for me, I'm just speaking for me, once I've got a good picture of what everything else looks like, I'm happy to reevaluate this. But that's just where I'm at right now.
It's exactly what we did with back when it was building and the development thing, ten, twelve years ago. We said, no, we went with this, and then it came back shortly after with a plan, different plan.
You know, to some degree, the methodology really is pretty solid. And, you know, and I, looking at the fee and lieu, it's it's almost six thousand dollars. That's kind of why I got confused about the thirty-three thousand. I was thinking that the twenty and and or twenty-five and then another six thousand fifty-nine hundred dollars in fee and lieu was where our thirty-three was in. So that's where I was confused at. So I guess that's not true. So in my mind, I think I'm in the mode of where Lori was in that. The fee and lieu is really right there. We should be collecting that as soon as possible. Why not collect the first year's worth of increase in seven or eight thousand dollars the first year and give us a chance to evaluate where the rest of these numbers should be, the stormwater, sewer, drinking, streets, where that all kind of puts together. And maybe it needs to be at twenty-five thousand or twenty thousand, but but to me, I I am at this point now where I would vote against this process if we were to go with any one of A through D. I I do like the fee and lieu. I I do think we need to start increasing the numbers for collections for our SDCs soon as possible. Let's get that process started. But give me a chance to look at the whole picture.
We have a couple steps here.
Dawn's got some.
Oh, I apologize. I'm just really curious, because the methodology got laid out really clear mathematically. They took the list of projects. They look at how much it costs, they look at its growth, and it's all just basic math. So for those of you who don't want twenty thousand after X years, whatever that is, and each one of those options has a deficit of empty million, depending on which option you go with and how fast you base it in, that deficit means those projects that don't get done in that timely, in that timeframe, right? So when you say we're not good with whatever number, what are you wanting to cut off? Because. Well, finish my statement, then, yeah, I'll, I'll take every buck. But when we cut that off, we shift the burden from those houses that are built between the start of that fee and the next provision left. And we shift that burden of those parks onto the citizens who are already here. That's what we're doing when we don't raise the SDCs to the proper calculated amount. We hired consultants because they calculated it. I don't like twenty thousand dollars. But it's math. We can say we don't want those parks. Therefore, we can calculate a lower SDC.
The other thing I like to point out is, I mean, in here, I just noticed the staff report, right? Uh, the 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 big one sounds like this is, this is the option A sounds like uh, that that one's just hard for for people to stomach. And I'll agree with that. But if you look at these, these eleven-year programs, we're talking about fifteen hundred to seventeen hundred dollar a year. That isn't going to change the 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 price of a house dramatically over the course of that year. And honestly, inflation's going to destroy that. Uh, unless our country takes a huge change. Uh, with all seriousness, though, uh, I mean, that's what we're talking about over this eleven years. It's fifteen hundred dollars in one plan a year or seventeen hundred dollars a year for a single house. I just, I mean, I'm not a real estate expert, and I I don't even play one on TV. But I just don't see that breaking the housing market. But I do see it making a substantial help for our parks and rags. And I'd like to also remind you that the reason we're in the wastewater predicament is because people didn't take the steps to make sure that we now. So all I'm trying to do is say, hey, in eleven years, if I'm still here or whoever's sitting in my seat, I don't want them to be going, hey, they dropped the ball eleven years ago when they had a chance to do it. Over fifteen to seventeen hundred dollars a house.
I'd like to make a motion and close the public hearing.
Where I was going.
I made the motion.
Here's a motion by Councilor Pete Sol and my second by Councilor Small to close the public hearing. Her signified by saying aye.
Here, I recommend that we look at resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-two. First.
I agree.
We agree on.
Which one is that?
I know, it's hard because I can't.
So that a motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion that we approve resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-two.
And also.
There's a motion by Councilor Pete Sol and a second by Councilor Exon. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries.
Look at that.
We do have a.
We should hug. Before the next one.
So I'm having a hard time finding twenty-one on here. I see twenty-three.
Twenty-two to twenty-one's a new methodology.
Which one is the twenty-one?
Charge and fee and moon methodology.
And we kind of needed to go with the the one we just approved.
I'm going to adopt the updated park systems development charge and fee and moon methodology, the resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-one.
Back to here some clarification, and what is the one I can't find it?
Go scroll all the way down the bottom.
It's thirty-seven to sixty-five on the P.
It's down at the bottom of the first piece.
It's not specifying the amount that we're going to be collecting, it's just specifying.
Which is basically the presentation that we just.
Yeah, is that's right, right? That's the methodology that not tell us that's going to be twenty-five thousand or eight or whatever. It just says, this is how we're going to go about this.
Did you motion that?
I'll make a motion that we accept.
We have a motion by Counselor Walker, second by Counselor Hopson. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Now we'll see how quick everyone is with the next one.
Okay. Yeah. So to answer your question, because I think you were asking a question. To answer your question, I'm not saying no to the process, and I'm not even necessarily saying no to increasing this in a year or six months. I just want to see the how the other numbers play out before I bite off on such a huge increase. I'm okay with doing the increase now. As far as what parks do we do and not do, I'd have to sit down, we'd have to look at that. And that's a whole nother session, right? I haven't even thought about that. You know, do I want the whole plan in the parks? Of course I do. Is that really realistic? Probably not. And I recognize that as well. So what we have before us is a plan and a process to get the whole enchilada, right? Recognizing that, eh, maybe we don't get the whole enchilada. But I guess that's a long way of saying that I'm I'm good with increase, the increase. But just not the big picture at this moment. Can I feel like I've said that a few times now?
Do, but just to add on, remember, I feel like neither of you are talking about the time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But right, like like that was one thing, and the whole thing is, you know, you got to remove parts. Yeah, but we can also adjust the implementation.
We can.
As well, right? We don't have to have all these parks in the next ten years.
Right. So my concern with that big picture is that in order to get to this, it took a, an updated parks master plan. We had to do one anyway. Right. And then this consultants went off and they churned for who knows how many months. I mean, we've had this presentation three times, right? To come back with a proposal that we may or may not approve tonight. Which I'd never supported along the way to begin with. Fair enough. But if we were to do wastewater, I mean, we have a facility plan that's got to get updated. I mean, that it's, we're years away from having everything in front of us. And even then, the world will have changed around us and something's going to be obsolete. So that's why. There's nothing that says we can't come back and revisit. But that's why I suggested some blinders. Now, uh, because the issue before us is this one today. Now, it sounds like we have consensus for a starting point somewhere in that seven to eight thousand dollar range, right? And it sounds like we don't have a strong, maybe we have four, I don't know, for going all the way to the max of twenty thousand, whether it's in five years or eleven. Uh, I'm curious if there's a lesser ramp that would be acceptable that we could start at eight and go to, because we we do have inflation that we have no idea where it's going to be in the next few years. It seems to be spiraling out of control right now. Maybe they'll control it, maybe they won't.
That is what I was trying to propose earlier, was we all start at like, you know, seven, eight, whatever.
Let's start today.
Where you would want to. Okay, I'm fine, but let's.
Difference, right?
Let's pick a number. And then let's go co- cost of living on top of that every year after.
Which would be a four percent this year and who knows what next year.
But that that gets into inflation and everything else. I guess every year, cost of living adjustment, we have that adjustment. Lori's point of going down or up, we can always come back and revisit it.
A four percent doesn't make up, so just doing CPI doesn't make up a deficit, right? It just maintains. Nobody's, yeah.
But right, but it doesn't stay stagnant, and then we get behind.
We, what, yeah, we definitely don't want to go there.
CD code does have us updating SDCs annually by the, um, construction cost index.
Yeah, I was going to say.
It doesn't make up the difference. I agree with you, Dawn. But on the other hand, it gives us a breadth of time to be able to look at these other issues, which um, I would say no if I didn't have at least some sort of time to be able to look at the other, the wastewater, the stormwater, the streets on and on and on, to see just if there is room for it. And maybe there is room for the twenty-five thousand dollars ten, eight years or five years, whatever that might be. But I think it gives me a chance to breathe a little bit, look at this in a perspective a little bit better. And and I think that setting up an immediate time start collecting, maybe an increase for cost of living or some, the cost of contracts. And then give us a chance to come back at this. And I would say, staff, come back with us and give us some sort of thoughts about where we should be with the entire package as well as the increases.
Could we go to fifteen?
Michelle, does option B and C, your money you need for your.
We're not in T one, I mean.
Option B and C will put us closer to that. Um, but there'll be, there'll still be some lost revenue, um, with B and C as far as because the maximum would be twenty-three thousand or twenty-five thousand. So to realize the full parks and trails master plan, uh, the SDC methodology maximum level was thirty-one thousand.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
So you're almost at four grand now. Thirty-seven, another eight.
You know, the the plan that we did, the number they came up with was like thirty-two, thirty-three thousand. And now we're talking about eight thousand and holding until some future date. That's a quarter of what.
I don't support that.
Uh, excuse me, it's it's a quarter of what what we're saying is we're only going to fund a quarter of the Parks and Trails master plan. And so I'm just really, again, I'm kind of like, we we all supported the Parks and Trails master plan, and then when it comes to kind of paying for it, you know, everybody's like, oh, we don't want to hurt, you know, we we don't, it's too much, it's too much. And then, and then we get, you know, somewhere down the line in the future, and everybody's like, you know, oh, we kicked the can down the road, and now we have to, you know, suffer the consequences. And I've just seen this after thirty-seven years here in Sandy, I've just seen this, you know, play out on every utility uh, and department that we have. And I just, you know, I'm supportive of the, you know, the the up, the D, and again, I could go with a longer ramp or something like that, but again, after how many years, we're only going to be up to what Lake us we go and Sherwood are already charges. After how many years is that, that we get to that point? Five or longer, you know? And so, and again, a- and then the where where I sit, again, I I like what you said, Lori, but I'm looking at it from the other side of the mirror and saying, we go ahead and put this in place, and then when we do get the SDCs identified for what these other ones, then we kind of take the opportunity to balance this. But in the meantime, we've been able to kind of collect that extra money to kind of, you know, fund, be closer to where we we should be doing to kind of fund our parks. But if we have to kind of cut it in the future, because we got to put more money towards, you know, we don't want to uh, soak anybody, we want to focus more on wastewater, we can do that, we can take it down. I'd rather go that way than than hold the line at eight thousand, say, you know, which is only half of what Lake us we go and Sherwood are even charging now. And God knows what they're going to be. And God knows what they're going to be charging in five or se- seven years themselves. So.
Much bigger cities with a lot more money. But let me, let me just for clarification, because maybe I'm not speaking in plain English. I'm saying for now, this this whole plan is eight thousand dollars for the first year. And then it increases. I'm saying we start at what they're asking and reevaluate within the next year. So I I guess I'm confused at what the problem is. I'm not saying the, and again, I'm just talking for myself. I'm not saying absolutely no way do I not support any of these. I'm saying tonight I don't support them. I'm willing to start with the opening eight thousand which is the first year anyway, and then reevaluate down the road. So I just want to make sure that I'm being clear about what I'm saying. And that there's no confusion.
Ed Rich.
Oh.
Jump right in. Yeah, go ahead.
Maybe we, I suggest we do what we do for the other S D Cs in the past for building and development. As we come in, it's a um looked at annually now. It was due several times, but it would come there. And so what you're a little bit what you're saying, a little bit what you guys are saying, right? It's a mix between the two, but we we could we could adopt, say, was to say scenario four, because we're talking about three, whatever, one of them, right? Like, and then we come back and we have another chance in one year to add for that to be increased. That is what we did uh several years ago. And then we try to change it to so we didn't have to come back in front of the council every time to do a CPI or see whatever the indexing was on that. Um, but it got us going down that that path of, you know, first year, then the next year it comes in front of council. That also gives it a chance to look at everything else that's there. You know, I I agree. Here's another point here. We have these type of things on our streets uh pu- plan that um T S P plan, right? And we do the same type of thing. We have things on there that we never get to, right? Then there's never, and we haven't. And we've added more in there because our ideas of where some stuff need to be built, changed, and ideas of what we're going to do, change. Something became more important of that. And so um of that list, it's kind of a, well, we've taken things off that list as well as time gone has gone on. And and when we're trying to figure out how to do three sixty-second and some of the funding that we had for there. So that part has changed as well. I'm sure this will happen here with uh the list. Uh that has nothing to do with whether we should adopt or not, but just remember that those lists change over time. People on this council in twenty years will have a different approach. Some things we built, some won't, some will, maybe we want sky bridges, I don't know. Um, uh for our 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 pathways. Um, but you know, that those things may evolve and change in those type of things. So, you know, we could propose uh what, I don't know what the thinking is for everyone on three or four or two on there. Sound like maybe four was the one. Some people refer it to as A, B, C, and D. I'm looking at it as one, two, and three, and four, but I maybe I'm looking at a different map. So I'm assuming D is four.
Now, staff write up, say through D, but in the vendor presentation, it's one through four.
I'm looking at that. So thank you. Um, so uh scenario four slash D um of being on there. If we uh if that was the one, um, you know, do we propose that we just start with that and come back within a year? Or do we also direct staff to say, come back in, you know, six months with uh some other findings of that. I understand wanting to put it in place. I do. I'm I'm there with you as well, because I'd like to get this done over with too, right? And move on. I said at the beginning, I have a, I have a hard feeling with just the jump. The biggest jump is year one. And we've all agreed to, it sounds like we've all agreed to the biggest jump from that. Um, everyone else after that is, you know, fifteen hundred dollars or whatever. I get it. They add up over time. Believe me, I built two houses. I paid this, you said, I didn't pay the S D C, I paid the, I paid the uh permitting fees and in and understand um how those have added up over the years as well. So but, you know, it does cost money to build, whether it is our future or not. So it also costs to have parks. And it costs to have sewer, it costs to have water. They're all, when you call them equally there, because some are mandated, we have to have, right? Um, and that is, we need to get rid of our sewage and we need to have clean water. But um, so I would propose that we would go with scenario four of the first step. It's not a motion, but that's a proposal.
I move that we adopt option four as part of resolution twenty-two-two dash twenty-three. Can you clarify that's option B instead of four? That is option and up. Yes, option B. Eleven years phasing to twenty-five.
With or without a.
After eleven years.
I did not modify. That's the, that was the option as in staff report.
It's the full thing.
You can, you can make a motion to modify or even second.
I'll second that. Motion.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor uh for option D. And there's a second. Uh Jeff, will you go to a roll call though?
I can I pause for a second. I'm trying to find this. I'm sorry, I keep going through this.
Thirty of sixty-five, where?
What's page sixteen if you have the. Here.
So it's page thirty is what you're looking for, June.
Was it slides? That's for you. This is the staff report.
You just have to add in.
Yeah.
Here you go.
Page four. Okay, so that's different.
Jeff has it up on the screen. Is this correct, Counselor Hopkinson?
Yes, that's, that's.
Well, if you go to, yeah, I'd be.
Yeah, you might get that.
If you look at slide twenty-two, it kind of shows the scenarios.
So this is, I mean, we're going to roll call votes. This is not what Counselor Smallwood was talking about or what was proposed by Counselor Pete Sol. It's fine. Yeah. That's a real call vote, man. Yes. Uh, Counselor Pete Sol?
No modifications to this.
Right.
Um. What's that? I know, it's just like, uh, right there, but I um, I uh like to make a second motion. So um I will.
There's a few of us waiting on your, your second.
There's a lot of us.
Well, can I make this like a motion now? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, no, I just, I just want to make sure.
Yes.
It's not way, uh, I'm gonna say no.
Okay, Counselor Smallwood?
No.
Counselor Sheldon?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Exon?
No.
Counselor Hopkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Pulliam?
No.
That is three yeses and four noes.
I would like to make a motion to accept option D uh for the next year. So um and bring them back to be looked at within one year for the remainder of the, the uh plan or whatever you want to call it, the the phasing in of the uh options. Otherwise, if not, it would fall under the increases thereafter. If it's not brought back, forget.
So option D with a one-year evaluation.
Yes.
Okay, and if not evaluated.
If not evaluated, it increases step year after year. Until it's been evaluated. Actually, I mean, what I'm adding is an evaluation clause.
Yeah.
In there. That's what I'm adding.
It has to be evaluated before it increases.
If it is not evaluated, it will increase.
As long as everyone understands that, I'll second.
Okay, great. I'm sweating like a storm.
I think we could, this is what I was saying the whole time.
Well, I, it just puts in the fact that needs to be evaluated because, you know, sometimes it doesn't happen. So I I just would like it to be evaluated. If it's not, then it just increases by that year. And then it's just evaluated. That's all. That gives the it the ability, I think, worth. Anyways, that is my motion.
Also, I know, a second. An annual review of the parks S D Cs um is essentially what the evaluation would be is when we bring back a master, all the master face and charges on your annual basis, we'd also present the S D Cs where we're currently at versus the the maximum amount adjusted for construction costs indexing.
But if it is not brought back, it will increase by that step.
So if staff just arbitrarily decides to not bring it back.
Right.
They have an accident.
It does put the onus on the mayor's staff to make sure it gets.
It does bring them, I and the council, it brings an onus on the council as well. It's just another check. That's all. So there's a motion in a second.
Motion and a, where the second here, a dumb motion from Counselor Pete Sol, the second from Counselor Hopkinson, just continuing on with the roll call though.
Counselor Pete Sol?
Yes.
Counselor Smallwood?
No, you lose me with the chance that it did not be evaluated.
Counselor Sheldon?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Exon?
No.
Counselor Hopkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Pulliam?
Yeah, I'm still in doubt for the reasons that were said.
I would like to make a motion. Or did? I thought you said no.
I did, but Jeremy said yes.
It was my motion.
Isn't that annual review and a uh an evaluation? I'm confused.
Yeah, if it doesn't, if it doesn't show up, then it, because the number there or whoever doesn't bring it up, then it just keeps moving on.
I actually think a council should look at these regularly.
Well, then why are we arguing all night long?
Well, that's what we, that's what we were saying all along. You guys were just kind of seeing dug in that you didn't want to go anything beyond the initial increase, that you wanted to increase it.
And we are.
Because.
It's like a brother sister thing, right?
I don't think so.
All right. Moving ahead to new business. You're up. You made it, you all.
Sorry.
Bye, Don.
Bye, Don. And they ask for water?
Thanks for yourself.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. And see us folks if they're still on.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone, counsel and mayor, for having me in front of you tonight. It's good to see you again. It's been a while. Um, what you have in front of you is a decision to allow the city manager to um approve the fifty-three thirty-nine grant agreement with the Orient Department of Transportation. In reading this, um just now, I think I should note that fifty-three thirty-nine is a typical grant that transit goes to for capital procurement. So this is not a new grant. We've entered these agreements for years. Um, a little bit of background, we went for a couple of grants and were awarded them. So you're seeing two options on this one grant, which the first is develop uh to develop a shovel-ready plan for a future expansion at Sandy Operations Center. Um, and the second part of this grant is to procure one electric thirty-five-foot low-floor heavy-duty transit vehicle. Both of these um were goals and objectives in the Transit Master Plan and also are part of City Council's goals. Um, particularly goal number one, which was to plan and provide sustainable infrastructure and implement the Transit Master Plan. Um, it, I have in here, and it it might be useful, but we can go to it later. A picture of the future expansions that have been planned at the Sandy Operations Center. There's been a plan in place since it was um constructed in two thousand nine. The plan's actually from two thousand and six. And so transit has always looked at that as the footprint of what is expected um for that development going forward and has fit our Transit Master Plan in that expected plan. Um, so the, what we did was we went for a grant that there's two buildings that have not been built at the Sandy Operations Center. One is an expansion of administrative space. Uh, you've all been there. So behind the Sandy upper, the main administrative building, there's a patch of grass. Um, there's picnic tables and then a patch of grass and then the generators. That's always been um slotted for a second admin building as the city grew. And behind that is another patch of grass and then the wash bay. That patch of grass has also always been allotted to be a future uh maintenance bay to support the city. Not necessarily transit. None of these were necessarily identified as a transit-only building, just like the wash bay. And the current administrative building are built to house any department that's at Sandy Operations Center. We have recognized for a while that we are running out of space as most departments are. And so we also in uh S T I F funding have been setting aside funding for this capa- what we are have been calling the capacity project. So we have funding in that project that we can use for match. We actually, I believe, have somewhere around ninety-three thousand sitting there that can be um added to this planning process if needed. Um, and then separately, we have the electric vehicle procurement. So I kind of put a lot in this staff report just to to give you an idea about the things that are happening and whoa, I just went really fast on mine. Um, the things that are happening with transit at the moment. Um, I will be in front of you a lot in the next coming months because we do have several grants that are coming in. Um, I know Jordan uh made you aware at our last meeting that we have been awarded two more electric vehicles uh through federal funding for a little over two million dollars. Um, and we also were awarded the some CARES Act funding. I came to you before and talked about our contracting prices have gone up. So we we were successful in getting some funding to help cover those costs. And then also, we really need to finish putting some driver protection barriers in our vehicles. We started that process during COVID for obvious reasons. And so we got funding to finish our fleet. Uh, so you'll see those to come. We have entered into the Fleet Partner Program with P G E and started the process to um build the infrastructure to make us ready for those electric vehicles. And Public Works has also joined us in those meetings so that they too can become part of that process if they um end up procuring uh electric vehicles in the future. Um, we also, as you see, there is a memorandum of understanding between the City of Sandy and ODOT. Um, they have uh selected six small agencies that they would like to do a pilot project and help us get ready to understand how to undergo um turning our fleet into an electric fleet and and leaving diesel vehicles. So um the recommendation tonight is that you um approve the city manager to sign the fifty-three thirty-nine agreement between ODOT and the City of Sandy.
All right, great. Questions?
Yeah, Andy, as always, you come to us with all this money. Is there anywhere in here at all that there is some money that costs us and operations, uh, expansion of training the drivers to do electric versus a diesel or anything like that? Or is all going to get paid by our grants?
It's it's going to get paid by grants. Um, there will be a match. So in here, you'll see under budgetary impact that there is a thirty-nine thousand dollars, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars in match for that planning, but I plan to use the S T I F funds that have already been set aside for that. Um, and then you'll see with the vehicle purchase, there's also a hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred to match, which has always been set aside for capital projects. That's what is in our beginning balance that you see with the Transit Department.
You will change my mind a bit, but just out of curiosity, it's nine hundred and some change for electric. What is it for a diesel?
So we paid about four sixty-five for our new diesel when we bought it about three years ago. Um, the base price for the electric is eight hundred and twenty-four, I believe, but it ends up being more around nine oh nine by the time you add what you need.
What is a base of diesel today?
Um, that's a good question.
Because I'm sure it's not the same price.
It's probably not. The the most important part of that, Carl, is uh the ability to get grants for diesel vehicles at this point in time is 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 very slim.
You don't care for the electric nature, which is fine, uh, look, it's bill us. You don't care for the electric nature, which is fine, look, it's fuelless.
What is the long-term maintenance on your, uh, these electric buses compared to your?
They have the same useful life. But do you mean it's cost? So there's several different examples out there, but cost of maintenance is significantly less with an electric vehicle. You don't have loop oil and filter for sure. So it's.
What about the charging stations? I mean, do we have to invest a bunch of money in the?
They're included in the grant.
Okay. Yeah, I have other questions. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, just as a comment, there's an environmental cost on both sides. So plus, we don't have the diesel. I've got some pictures. Traveling down behind some, not buses, but some other trucks with black smoke just barreling out of the vehicle. And I think that's as obscene as us not being prepared to have enough electricity to pay for all the new conversion electricity. Obviously, we've got approval paid for, so. Keep going, Anna.
I love the idea.
Yeah.
Did you have something?
I just.
I have.
Oh, I had a couple of questions too. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm all about the electric bus, you know, get on the bus and let's go. The grant for the master plan stuff is the concern I have. And I get it that we're getting a lot of free money for this, but the the PW Transit plan was done in two thousand and six prior to construction. And we now have lots of water and wastewater stuff going on where we're talking about possibly bringing in instead of having contractors run some of the water treatment or whatever, having bringing in some of those people in-house. We have, you know, expanding park maintenance needs that will bring in some more employees. We have yet to find a home for Sandy Net. And in my opinion, I believe that Sandy Net should be at this site, possibly on that expanded two-acre site or something like that. I don't have, I don't have any, you know, allegiance to where it goes. But I believe that when you consolidate, you know, these departments into one facility, it's cheaper to operate in the long run when you've got all the bathrooms and the parking and the security and all that. So I'm concerned like, you know, what happens when we need to get, find a home for Sandy Net? And so doing this plan, when it's funded by ODOT, and we all know how ODOT is, they kind of, you know, they provide the money and they call the two. And so my concern is that this plan, I believe what we need to be doing is looking ahead to what our facility needs are going forward for all these other departments, sort of like the STCs, you know, and saying, well, you know, because what I see is that this appears to be kind of building a lot of capacity for the transit and all their contracted employees, which in my opinion, we should either be, you know, requiring them to get their own facilities or to or 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 at least leasing a lot of facilities to them and and collecting all the money for that. Because I think Clackamas County is getting a steal of the century when when we, you know, take care of all those costs. We saw that when the the prior contract got, you know, canceled or whatever, they, you know, they didn't renew it or whatever, we were left holding the bag trying to kind of make them swim. And Andy does a, you know, heroic job of keeping everything running and, you know, per, you know, getting all this money. And so it's no reflection on transit. But I am concerned, you know, it's sort of like when you decide to Airbnb your house because you see how much money everybody's making on Airbnb, but you don't have a place to live. And I'm concerned that with the needs that we have in these other departments, including Sandy Net, that, you know, if we set aside a bunch of land for transit, we're going to be, you know, in five years or whatever, going, well, we need a home for Sandy Net or we need more room for public works or parks or whatever it is. And so I want to make sure that this plan really is balanced with the needs of these other city of Sandy departments and not skewed towards towards meeting Clackamas County's needs for us to be their triment service for them. Because I think that's not in our mission statement. And if we can do both, I'm all about it. Making money and, you know, keeping it, keeping it up. But my first focus is what are the needs of the City of Sandy here in five, ten years? And I think this plan needs to be updating that two thousand and six facilities master plan and really looking at it. And if we can do that with their money and study it, that's fine. But my concern is that when they're paying the piper, the whole thing is going to be skewed towards making room for all the transit stuff and not really looking at it holistically. So that's my comments, but go for the electric bus. I'm about that.
Your motion.
Yeah, I just, oh, I just had the one comment. I I'll I'll ask you later. Just keep things going, but I'm glad we didn't sell the property to the south of it. So you had a motion to take.
No, okay. I moved to authorize the city manager to sign the fifty-three thirty-nine grant agreement for both the planning process and the purchase of one thirty-five-foot electric vehicle, AKA a bus.
Can I get my question answered, though, about how, what, I I would like that, an answer to that question.
It's funny, you just closed out by saying it was a statement.
It didn't sound like a question.
Went on for a while with a long statement and then he went and answered, but yeah.
Please, yeah, just I I do want to know what, I mean, I I asked, I sent an email earlier asking the question.
So, yeah.
Then did we reply?
What was the email? So I know what it, you asked.
It just what I just read what what it said.
Oh, I didn't know you read what it said.
Nobody's seen the emails.
Nobody's seen the.
I just sent it to Jordan and and Andy. So it's just asking that question, though.
Yeah, so, um, as I said, I have used this plan, which you're right, is from two thousand and six, because it gives us a blueprint and and is a plan that's set forth by the city. So I have operated with the understanding that that is a goal for the city is to expand the Sandy Operations Center as this plan sets forth. What the, what the grant states is that we will have a shovel-ready project, a planning project, including architectural and engineering for the two buildings. It does say that there, the project is to expand administrative space for transit as well as training space for drivers, et cetera. So what that means is, and what what I have talked to with Public Works in the past, I have Jenny, not so much because she's, she's got her plate pretty full. But we have dreamt with Public Works crew for a long time that if we get that second building, that would be more of where operations happens. So a training room, Public Works washer and dryer, where the lockers, the kitchen, where they come in for breaks, their mudrooms, et cetera, which allows us to open the front building more for office space. If you're in there during the day, it can get quite loud because of the way that the building is set up. And then we can have people coming in for lunch and breaks and and that's where PW's mudroom is and that's where parks and et cetera. So if we had the second building, both buildings are for all departments. I would love to see Sandy Net at the Operations Center. I completely agree that it it's it's cost efficient when you have departments in one, in one space. But we currently all need room. So this, this is for a planning process. It's not for building, it's for planning. So it will be inclusive.
Those buildings, extra buildings you're saying are for transit.
They are not necessarily for transit. They need to, they need to be able to meet my goal of having extended capacity. So I do need to be able to show when it's said and done that I have added capacity for the Transit Department. That does not mean that entire building is for transit. It's, I have no intention of having an entire building for transit. I pay the city per square foot that I use. So I'm, any department that wants to come join me down there, great, because it's going to take my costs down. So I I don't have any intention. Now, the difficult part will be, and and Jordan and I and Tyler and I have talked about this in the past, is that when we build or 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 put this vision into a plan, I can't spend all transit money to build a building that houses multiple departments. It will have to be something that the city does together or transit does in phases. I don't know what that looks like, but we have this opportunity and this funding to put a plan in place and give us the ability to go out and get the grants to build it. Thanks.
One second, Richard's motion.
All right, there's a motion by Counselor Sheldon, a second by Counselor Smallwood. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those nays. Motion carries. All right. Port from the city manager. Thank you and appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, just a reminder about the comp plan vision statements. Thank you to counselors that responded to Shelley so far. And hopefully we've had a chance to to open that up and take a look. I actually think it's a great start. And they captured, I think, a lot of the the public engagement and comments that we received so far. It actually a lot of similarities to kind of the vision slogans and stuff that had been kicked around from council with a small-town feel, et cetera. So take a look. Please try to get back to Shelley by the end of the day, I think tomorrow. We've got a lot of stuff kind of coming up now with public engagement, the Future Fest at the end of the month with the TSP and the comp plan and economic developments, a strategic plan, all being a part of a a good event there to get public engagement on on those topics. The other thing that Shelley sent recently was regarding House Bill four thousand and six, I think. And I think we had sent some information to council a few months ago, probably maybe half a year ago that got buried, I'm sure. But it was sort of referenced about this requirement that the city holds a public hearing on housing affordability. So another state requirement based upon the the fact that the census data is showing that Sandy is a severely rent-burdened city where you are obligated to hold a public hearing. So Shelley provided a memo that kind of goes into the background on that bill and and sort of the purpose. And then this is something that we do need to schedule before the end of the year and have a a public hearing and and share that information. And then we are just about done with our stretch of events. We have corn cross this weekend at Leopold Farms, a kind of a tradition with the mountain biking race. And again, just wanted to thank Parks and Recreation for all the work this summer on gearing up for those events. And I know we've talked a lot about that over the the last several weeks. We've had a new employee that started today, actually a handful of employees in the library, building monitors. And then AJ Thorne started here as our Assistant Public Works Director. He's really excited to be here and and getting getting started on all the stuff that we got going on and helping Jenny with the the projects and development reviews and water and wastewater and all that. So we're excited. He's he's upstairs. We actually found a way to make room for him in the city. What's that?
I just said squeeze him in.
Oh, yeah. Wow. Yeah. And then finally, a special executive session next week, just a reminder on that, the twelfth at six o'clock for the Sandy Urban Renewal Agency. And then just a month away, we have the Ben Conference that we have everybody signed up for. We had an electric bus, we could take the electric bus, but I won't be here for a while.
Charge it.
Yeah.
Hey, thanks. I noticed that my wife actually noticed and complained to me that the visibility at some corners is difficult with overgrowth and things that has plantings that block vision and start to create problems. Which got me thinking about the broader theme of code enforcement. Seems like it's a recurring theme almost every week that somebody brings up an issue where things aren't being followed up on or shouldn't be or so forth. And and so I was just going to throw an idea out there to ponder and think about. But maybe if we were to create a transparency, a code enforcement call log where people could post issues and, you know, because there, I'm sure there's a backlog and mainly a one officer, so it's going to take a time. But it'd be interesting to see, okay, I went to such such an address and here's the response from the owner. Because it it would maybe mitigate some things like what if a neighbor has reported, one of my neighbors reported another neighbor for trees, you know, that were growing into the area. Well, upon talking to Officer, Officer, they agreed to wait till the fall when the leaves fall off to trim. So they present, well, that's, that's the kind of feedback I think is useful in such a a log. And then an ability to report things, you know, just the minor stuff like, you know, these neighbor bushes that are blocking the, my view of the streets when I turn out or something like that. So something to think about. So that's it. And apologies.
For what?
Just B and B. I apologize for B and B. For you. The art commission or God Committee is not doing anything again. And I just want to make sure everybody knows that.
What's it going to take to get that moving?
All I want to do is, I wonder if there's a need for a motion to be able to.
Jordan, do you need a motion? Because I'll make it right now. Sure, I'd like to make a motion that.
Recruitment for the.
That we start recruitment for the Arts Commission.
At the end of the year, yeah. And I'll second. Which was, I just getting tired of saying.
I don't need you, Mayor. I don't want the agenda, right? We have it on there next to there. Support to put it on the agenda, but it's not.
Well, it's been talked about for months.
Every meeting, there's a portion on the agenda called change, proposed changes to the agenda. I had an email address and went in a phone number in which any counselor up here.
I'm going to call you every day, every hour and every minute.
Calm down. I said, I didn't require a motion. I was just saying, what does it take? And I think there's enough impetus on this council. If you want, we can do one, but I think it's obvious that people in the council are okay with moving forward on a.
So Counselor Exner and I have had many conversations about the Arts Advisory Board.
And there's a reason for it.
There's a reason for it. We, we wanted to staff up in our Parks and Recreation Department. The council did table this when we made the change from an arts commission to advisory board that we were going to give some time between the commission and the new board. And then we were going to staff up in the Parks and Recreation Department, be able to handle the new, the staff load, to staff a new advisory board that failed the first time. And we didn't want to repeat that failure.
For a number of reasons.
Set up for success.
I I didn't mean to bring it up, create stress and division between the council members. I didn't mean just to bring it up, so please forgive me for, because we're in the forgiveness about those kinds of things. Okay, moving on. I made that point. I got a letter today that said that backflow tests are due, and I know a number of people in the city don't do that. I've had some of the folks, Johansson, I think is his name, the guy that's in charge of that, has told me a couple of times that he's pretty sure that there's a number of folks on the city that have backflow devices, which means a sprinkler. And I got my letter today, and I think it's important that we move forward. It's due in October. So please, if you have a backflow device or if you're pretty sure or you don't know, just check into that. I have a question about the ODOT barricades. I see them still up. Is is there a way to get those things down as they? I I see some that do have the bark dust in those permeable spots and some that don't have bark dust. Assuming that's a safety issue for the ones that don't have.
Yeah, they're not going to remove the barricades until they're completely done with that.
With everything. And so it's not going to get.
Yeah.
It it sure creates a fair amount of ugliness as well as I'm in front of, my office has two of them on both sides of of scales. And it just is, I just see parents moving around when it comes up to the the Friday afternoon fair, there's a lot of people doing things that are weird to get around those barricades. Some are even walking in the street. It just seems odd that once those things are done, they shouldn't be able to get those down.
We're looking into your question too about the bark and.
Okay. I think it's mentioned before, a school has started up again, and there is a a lot of people on Bluff and twenty-six all the way down into the new high school. So please be careful about that. There's a lot of stuff. My wife was pretty frustrated. Like it was Tuesday morning when it first started back up again. A lot of people were parked on twenty-six trying to pull into Bluff. This morning? And it just, just seemed weird that we have trucks parked in the same place, the cars are parked. Everybody's trying to pull over. And it is a mess. So please be patient until three fifty-second gets put in. I assume it's going to happen soon, right? Yeah.
Same time your barricades come up.
Re-elected, that's only.
Right around the time of that art commission. I'm not, it's a joke.
All right, it's a joke.
I have a couple of questions. Jordan, there was a complaint that we all got about the food cart getting shut down at Freddy's. I didn't quite understand what the private thing was. I don't need to know all the background. But then like the next day, my mother-in-law went down to Safeway and there was, they were out there barbecuing something, barbecue in front of Safeway. And so I just didn't, you know, she told me about it and I said, oh, that's kind of interesting that, you know. And I, anyways, it's just something that, you know, are we not being consistent on how we implement? Or is there just, you know, you could do this, but you can't do that. Anyways, just clarifying what the rules are for those folks. And getting back to that guy that wrote, wrote us about the food cart would be probably good.
But. I've gotten back to them. But they've gotten back to them.
Multiple times.
There is an interesting thing in our code that carts that are motorized are not permitted. And this was something that we received a complaint about and notified the the property owner, Fred Meyer. And, you know, but then the work got to the business owner. And, you know, this is a complaint-driven process. So the one at Safeway, I mean, we received complaints and hey, that's not allowed. And there was a reason why this law was created when it was created ten years ago or so. Council might want to revisit that in the future if we want to start allowing, you know, motorized, you know, businesses. But that's our code, and we had to enforce the code. We explained that to them. You know.
When is the RV code coming back for approval? We asked for some changes. Is that soon, I hope?
I have it right now, drafted for October. Sorry.
And then how is it, I'm curious about how enforcing our new homeless code is going. I do support getting like the outdoor plugs on a separate circuit that is on a timers that shut off. The library and mining park plugs, somehow getting those so that they automatic, so it doesn't have to even be a staff person to go turn them off. It just automatically shuts off. We, I I've kind of heard from members of the public about crossing signs at the Tickle Creek Crossing, which is actually east of the, you know, the traffic calming bump outs there at the one where we kind of go onto the pavement trail. Well, the crossing that's actually where the east end of the trail is, you just cross the street and it's really, and you're kind of on a bit of a curve and stuff. And so they're asking that we kind of get those, you know, crossing signs up there, which would be a really big help. And so I'm just going to ask you to kind of work with Ryan and Jenny to see if we can't make that happen. They kind of sent the video and some other stuff, and I'll forward that on to you. And then this Arts Commission, again, I, you know, I just want to make sure, it seems like we're kind of, the whole Parks and Rec Department is kind of really just, you know, riding the bike while they're putting it together and, you know, growing and coming back out of COVID and all that. And I just don't want to, you know, I'm not saying I don't want an arts commission. I just want to make sure that we don't have the mistakes we had before and that we have a staff person dedicated to it. And so, you know, if we were to look at that again, I just want to kind of make sure we have a staff report done that kind of outlines how it's going to be done well and 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 that we have the staff to assign to the, to make sure it goes well. So I'm just an arts commission staff reporter that gets brought in agenda. That's all I have.
Perfect. Rich.
Now, I'm done. No report.
No report. Quickly for me, kids back to school. You saw that you saw the backup on Bluff down. Proctor a little bit there. Bell Street three sixty-second is going to be awesome to help alleviate that. But just be looking out, safety and stuff for those kiddos out there. And then, you know, I was just gonna let us out early, but just to Kathleen's point on what Parks Rec, the Arts Commission. And just, you guys, and sorry for the reaction there, but, you know, it it maybe you get a little bit more of a sense of responsibility that in the mayor's position with staff on this. But, I mean, my challenge to everyone up here, and you don't have to meet with every department head, certainly don't have the time, I'm trying to spend their time. But it may not hurt everyone to maybe have a conversation or two with our department heads about their responsibilities and about how much work they have to do and what a day and a week looks like for these folks. And I'll tell you, you know, we're a fairly difficult council as far as what we demand in our staff reports and the thoroughness and the follow-up. We're continually saying that's not good enough. Please report back, you know, to council. This is all workload. I look at Jeff Operati, he would be in charge of promoting, you know, for arts commission positions. We also ask him to head up our communications for us, you know, a- as a city. He's doing the Sandy Source. He's trying to answer stuff online. He's trying to promote stuff. He's trying to do his job as recorder. That's just one position. Kathleen, you know, talked about Rochelle a little bit. We can get into Jenny. But guys, these guys are busy, right? And then I also look at our council, like our council agendas are light. Like this was a light agenda. I heard this snickering before we went into this meeting. I'm like, oh, let's not joke about, you know, how early we get up. Guys, it's nine fifteen. And then I keep hearing every time I try to shove something into the consent agenda that should be easy for us as a council to look at. Are you getting counselors wanting to pull it out of the consent agenda and have work sessions? And whole other meetings on this stuff, you guys? Like, I need us to try individually to think through what we're demanding of our staff, what we continue to demand, what their current workload is, what we're asking our council to review. And then when we show up here, our dialogue and our questions, like, do they need to actually be asked? You know, or 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 can they be asked in an in an email that was sent earlier in the day and then we decided to readdress it up here? I mean, just let's try to be a little careful of time and a little and a little bit more aware and careful of what our staff workload is, especially when we're communicating with them or asking them lengthy emails with requests just prior to council meetings and things like that. And let's just be extremely, let's just try to be a little bit more thoughtful in how how we handle ourselves as a council, especially with the staff, staff. So, all right, thank you, guys.